Meeting will come to order. This is the Rules and Government Relations Committee meeting of December 11th, 2019, at 6:00 PM. So, do we have -- we do have minutes to approve?
November 18th and October 1st minutes. I'd like to make a motion to approve those two minutes.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Cool.
We're still missing December 3rd because it's not up on video. And I'm trying to be involved in the meetings. I'll use the video.
Yeah.
Which forces me to watch myself, and I hate that.
It's tough. It's a very sobering experience to -- I can't stand the way that my voice sounds on the video. I don't know if it sounds that annoying in real life, but that's where we are.
Anyway, they're done.
Great.
Do we want to do anything with your, um, your rules changes? Do you have those? They need to go in the package?
Um, yes. Actually, that's something that I spoke to Barb about today. And I was thinking, because I wasn't sure what to expect for this meeting, my initial inclination was to say that if we want to make any change, like, we voted on it in the past, any further changes should just get amended.
Right. Didn't you include those things that Peg was giving you?
Well, no, I included those things that we voted on. But since then, Barb said -- but now I'm kind of thinking, you know, if this goes kind of quickly, then maybe we can just handle it tonight and save on, you know? Because all of those were kind of no-brainer things.
Okay. Yeah, but I'm all set with you making the changes and submitting them, anyway, because I'm the chair of the financing committee.
Right.
If I give you a change, it's okay with me.
Okay.
The council's still going to vote on it. So I think you should just, if you have the time.
And those --
Mend it as we all talked about.
Yeah.
And then put it in, and then we'll make other changes if we have to.
Okay. So, if I'm -- so how about this? I'll make a motion to further amend the committee realignment language to strike the finance sections that Barb and you said should be stricken.
I accept it.
All right. I'll look to you.
Are they the only ones? What about the other ones?
No one else's.
Oh, you got some from Peg, but they were already done?
The ones, yeah. Those are already done. So, the only things that we've gotten since then are the things that you and Barb sent me via email.
Okay.
So, if you're cool with that, I'm cool with that.
Okay. So you just have to get those in to Barb tomorrow.
Yep. I'll fix it up tonight.
All right.
Beautiful. Okay. So, now we're talking about Medicare for All. Um, let's see, how do I want this? Counselor Zare, do you want to just introduce this real quick, because this was your thing?
Yeah, thank you. So, you know, we're talking about a resolution supportive Massachusetts Senate Bill 683 and House Bill 1194, which basically supports a Medicare for All or single-payer healthcare system to be established within the Commonwealth, depending on what you want to call it. What's -- regardless of what you want to call it, what's more important than what we'll establish, we all know that whether it be in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or in our country, our nation, the cost of healthcare are becoming insurmountable. Whether it be access to healthcare, or affording medications, or affording care, this is something that's really becoming more and more of a financial burden on individuals, if they're even fortunate enough to have access to insurance. And even when you have access to insurance, you're not necessarily guaranteed access to healthcare or affordability of your medications. And there, in our state alone, there's 200,000 people who are uninsured, and there's many people who are underinsured. And so, both -- and as a healthcare provider, this is something I see all the time. And it's problematic. It creates a problem for people to actually be able to get taken care of. It creates a burden on our healthcare system in the sense that someone has to end up having to pick up the bill for the people who are uninsured. And, you know, the gold years to establish basically a single-payer system within the state to be able to accommodate equitable access to healthcare for everybody, or I should say insurance, basically, because healthcare is slightly different. There was previously a non-binding referendum on the ballot in 2018, and 70% of people in East Hampton voted for that. I'm not sure how it passed across the state, but...
Passed in every district.
So, there you go. Representative Sabodosa, in first-hand share, is the main author, and our representative, Dan Carey, is a sponsor here in second-hand share. Aside from allowing access, better access, to everybody for insurance, thereby healthcare, there would also be substantial cost savings to municipalities, and also avoid some of the headaches that people tend to have to go through, such as, you know, some of the issues that we went through recently with the unions negotiating healthcare. That would potentially go away. Here's your healthcare. And we're going to save potentially $3 million. So, this is -- I am the person who submitted this, but I'm certainly -- and certainly something I believe in, but I'm thankful that we have great advocates in Western Mass for this, and that being the Western Mass for Medicare for All, who brought this to me. And this is probably what we started talking about. This is at least six months in the making.
Oh, more than that. I think it's done.
So this is many, many months in the making. This has taken many, many conversations in my trying to get a better understanding about the mechanics behind this and what this actually represents. And Sarah and I met, as well as I met with some other members, as well as the whole -- the members of the hub as well. Deborah Levinson, who can't be here tonight. And, so, you know, this is something I feel very strongly, and I think especially because this is one of -- this is legislation that will certainly impact our residents, our constituents, but also will impact the municipality in terms of, you know, creating a more favorable financial environment. So, I'll turn the rest over, if that's okay, to the -- oh, I'm sorry. Counselor, you probably have to.
Well, Rick. You raise your hand first.
I was just going to say, I know you all want to speak at length to this, which I'd like to hold up and use that for the full council meeting, but I'm pretty sure that this is...
How will we not speak at length?
Well, it's just, if you wouldn't just mind letting us ask questions, certainly you're welcome to, if you really want to speak to it, but I think at the main council meeting, we can even sort of do a lot. What I was impressed with...
You can sit at the table if you want.
I talked to Dan Carey at length today, because he's a sponsor. I had a couple of questions, which I know you could probably answer, too. One of them was the cost, how it was being paid for. And he indicated to me that it's required by the employer to fund this if it's passed. And the employer, so doing, as I understand it, it is mandatory that they have this available to their employees. What I'm not sure of is, does that eliminate the possibility for private insurance, should the employee not trust the state? So maybe I'll...
Yeah, I can answer it. Go ahead. So, the -- it's paid for by 7.5% employer payroll tax, exempting the first $30,000 of payroll. And then there's an additional 0.44% payroll tax for companies that employ 100 people or more. And the employee payroll tax is 2.5%. And that means...
That's what I would pay as an employee.
That's all you would pay. You would pay no premium, no insurance premiums.
Right.
No co-payments, no deductibles, no nothing.
No point-of-service funding whatsoever costs for the person seeking healthcare.
And then there's a 10% payroll tax on self-employed people, exempting their first $30,000, and a 10% tax on unearned income above $30,000. But that doesn't include social security, unemployment compensation, or pension. Well, you know, people hear the word "tax," and they get terrified.
Right. Like, if I'm paying nothing on my healthcare premium...
Right, exactly.
Which is Elizabeth Warren's idea. I mean, if you're not paying anything, it balances.
Yeah.
But the point I'm trying to make is, if someone says, "I don't trust the state, I want my own," is the law, is what we're passing saying that to people? "I'm sorry, you have to live with the fact that this is all you get. I want my Blue Cross and Blue Shield, I don't care what you say."
So the system, as we're proposing, substitutes private insurance for healthcare trust, single-payer funding.
Okay.
Okay, so that, that's the ideal that we're striving for. Undercuts the whole premise of everybody being in, so that people can negotiate from -- so the healthcare trust can negotiate from a point of strength, right? Because everybody's in. Um, you know, all countries do it differently. And other single-payer systems do have ways to, I mean, they do have some private insurance. That's not what we're seeking. I think some of those details, we can't say, you can put your own viewpoint here. We don't advocate that.
You don't advocate which?
Any private insurance.
No private insurance should be available.
Should be, but this is a political thing, because people say they don't want their health insurance taken away, and the...
Well, I think the basic thing is, they don't trust their government.
Well...
And I think, and I think, what I would think that might be sensible is to have a transition over time where the government can prove itself. But on the other hand, that's not a make or break for me. I was just curious, if the bill itself's language, this is what you want, but if the bill's language say, "No private insurance will be -- this is mandatory by all employers, and therefore, private insurance is gone." Is that what the bill's language is?
The bill's language doesn't say it like that.
What?
So there's a loophole. I don't think for that.
Just fine. The way, though, as Ann said, the coverage that's being proposed far exceeds any kind of insurance that I've ever seen. I mean, there is, I'll just get to that part.
It's complete coverage.
It's including long-term care...
And dental?
Dental, high...
Everything, non-health treatment.
That's why it's not like Medicare. Nope. It's...
Well, it just sounds very expensive, but based on your studies, I assume that...
Over 10 years, the average Massachusetts resident, over a 10-year period, would be paying less for the healthcare. The median Massachusetts resident. It doesn't mean that some wealthy people might not be paying a bit more. But we're talking about the average citizen. The average citizen, the studies show, will pay less for their healthcare.
And we're seeing the studies. That's Jerry Friedman's report.
Yeah, it's Jerry Friedman. His blog is as well.
Fun fact, Jerry Friedman was my thesis advisor.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
He's an economic super-advocate.
Yeah, great guy, too.
He is a great guy. So, I would just say that here's a, in your packet, there's a list of the covered benefits. And besides sort of the regular things, includes home healthcare, including personal care, long-term care, hospice care, dental, vision, hearing, prescription drugs, durable and non-durable medical equipment. So those are things that even a primo, expensive policy, insurance policy, probably doesn't cover all that kind of stuff. But the other thing I wanted to say is that what we're trying to do right now is just get this bill out of the healthcare financing committee, so that it can be debated in the legislature. Because I don't believe that the bill that we're looking at now is going to be exactly the same when it gets through the legislature.
First off, yeah.
Very few bills are. So, you know, there may be a door open for people who want their private insurance, although I think part of this is having listened to the debates. One of the things that's happening in the Democratic presidential debates is that people are saying, "No, you're going to, we're going to take away your private insurance." And most people are not really happy with their private insurance. They pay huge premiums and you get lousy coverage.
I don't.
But I think...
And I also, we're using fear tactics, and I think oftentimes people believe that the removal of private insurance means that they will lose their primary care.
Right. And that will not happen.
That was one of my questions, and none of this will happen. But I think it'd be fine. You know, I, you've answered my question.
The other piece, sorry, that I just wanted to say, related to that. The reason why this can provide so much coverage is because, as Ann said, everybody will be in the pool. So healthy people will be in the pool, and older people will be in the pool, and babies will be in the pool.
And hospitals won't be charging as much, because they don't have to cover uninsured people.
And it's also necessary.
Oh, well, I was just going to say, to kind of expand on what I think some of the comments here is that, you know, current health insurance plans, often what you run into is they, you'll find out what you don't have access to, as opposed to this plan, which is where you, it's...
All medically necessary, there's work...
Yeah.
All medically necessary treatment. And it's basically based on your doctor's recommendation, not the insurance company's. People may like their health insurance, say you don't go to the doctor very often, you like your health insurance, until you get cancer, until you have, or heart surgery, when things aren't covered. That's when the bankruptcies, most bankruptcies are healthcare-related. People don't know what they don't have until they have to use big bucks.
And another thing about it, this is a big thing that Jerry Friedman talks a lot about, is there's a tremendous amount of overhead in the healthcare industry that's related to figuring out whether you're covered, and figuring out what insurance you have.
Administrative costs.
Kelsey, my girlfriend, spent years of her life just being like a billing person for a mental health funding, just trying to chase down insurance companies and see what they'll cover and whatnot. And then, of course, there's billing, and then there's chasing people down when they are me, and they don't pay their bills, and like, you know, like, there's a ton of things here, you know? And when you cut all those costs, oh, plus the advertising, I mean, think about all the money that goes with the advertising for the different plans. When you cut all that out, you know, I mean, it really does streamline things.
So I think the figure is 30% administrative overhead for current healthcare, 30%. Medicare, Medicare, you know, is going to be better than Medicare. Medicare doesn't cover what needs to...
And you have to have supplemental insurance.
It's about what, 5% or 10%? It's very low.
I know that in the film Fix It, which is a film about single-payer, they talk about how Mass General Hospital has 400 people in their billing department, and Toronto General Hospital has like 200.
Right.
So there's the cost.
And the other piece is, when everybody's in the pool, then the Commonwealth has a lot of power to bargain with pharmaceutical companies around the price prescriptions. That's why I go a little crazy when I hear people talking about the Medicare option, because you can't really have a public option...
What, a public option?
Oh, a public option, sorry. A public option, Medicare for All, public option, because you won't have enough people in the pool to generate this kind of coverage and this kind of savings. And East Hampton's going to save, according to the figures that we came up with, $3 million.
Well, that sounds fantastic.
I'm sure it would be much better stat on...
Could think of some things to do. It's a lot of pickleball for us.
The only other thing that I asked Dan about was the employees across the state, what do they think? And he told me that there's a large group that covers all of the unions and that have supported it, which is all I care. We just had a major issue with how our trust, our healthcare trust, is requiring some new, you know, raising co-pays and things like that. And our unions were very careful, very strong about what they wanted. So I was curious how, gee, if they look at this, what you're telling me, that they're going to have a better healthcare plan, and there's no benefits. It doesn't sound like there's any benefit they're going to not get. They get mental health, they get everything.
Our plan is, for Massachusetts healthcare plan, really good, but this is better.
Yeah, well, our plan is good, but you have to pay premiums and...
And if you think...
Sorry, Counselors there.
Oh, pardon.
Oh, well, I mean, to address that, too, I believe that, I did some research about this, and the Massachusetts AFL-CIO actually explicitly stated that they will not endorse a candidate, this is to do more nationally, but they will not endorse a candidate who does not specifically have on their platform a single-payer or Medicare for All.
Really?
And so AFL, whatever, what's that acronym?
AFL-CIO.
They're on board. There are some unions that aren't quite, so, and there, so there are pockets. A person's continuing to be persuaded, and that's what our grassroots...
The MTA's on board, right?
That's what our grassroots organization's about.
That is the primary employee group for all cities and towns, is the teachers, because it's the largest employee group in every city and town. And I was curious what they, because they're the drivers in our city. And we have large unions, but compared, the teachers dominate, but as they should, and I think it's great.
If you look for the teachers, you're, that's where you're going to have a ton of savings, because currently, $2.3 million is spent on school district employees' healthcare. And that's going to go away.
Would their, they pay, an employee of the city would pay 2.5% if I heard you right.
Right.
That's probably still less than the premiums they're paying, even though they're only paying 25% of their healthcare premiums, because we pay 75 in our, I don't know, I have to look at the numbers, but it sounds like that 2.5% isn't very high.
And they'll get much better coverage, even if they're, I'm sure they have one in the city.
Well, we have a pretty good plan, but the point is, there's a lot of people don't even have insurance. That's the reason, too.
Right. So part of this idea about grassroots organizing to get cities and pound on board by passing this resolution is really to build our constituency, to bring it to the state and say, "Look, we've got the backing of these entities." So each group that comes on board really builds our movement.
Right.
And it may still take a while, but we're just, we're hopeful that Massachusetts, if Ann's going to be the leader, then we'll get in there.
Yeah, we have a pretty active Western Mass Medicare for All. We're doing a lot of stuff, and we're trying to get Eastern Mass to organize a little bit more. But the Boston City Council passed a resolution recently.
Northampton has, Hammer's...
You know what? That'd be great. If you could provide the council next week with a list of cities and towns that have already passed it. Do that, because that helps residents. I don't think you're going to have a counselor that's questioning this, but on the other hand, no.
Never do.
I?
Counselor Zare does.
You still talk, okay. Go ahead, Owen.
Mr. Chairman, if you will, Laura Britton's here. She couldn't make, she wouldn't be able to make it to the next meeting if this were voted unfavorably, so I just wanted to, if I may, give her the opportunity to speak on behalf of this.
Of course.
So I'm here...
Laura Britton? Write it down. Sorry.
So I'm here as an East Hampton resident. I'm also here as an organizer with Massachusetts Jocks with Justice, the Jocks with Justice Coalition, who is in favor of the Medicare for All bill within Massachusetts. I also, in my previous role, as a legislative aide to Lindsey Sabodosa, who's the primary House...
That's right. And I'm like, who am I going to be?
Of the Medicare for All bill, and is the chair of the Medicare for All Caucus in the House, the first ever. So I'm here to speak in favor, and a lot of the things that I wanted to touch upon have already been settled, as I love. There is, you know, it's really important as a city to add our voice to the growing, continually growing list of municipalities that are in favor of this, not just to state our support, but also state our support to our legislators. Also, something that was touched upon by this person, I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Ann.
Ann, was the collective bargaining power of the entire state of Massachusetts. That's, for me, the most important aspect of this bill. Two days ago, there was a Gallup poll that was published that said a record number of 33% of Americans, say they or a family member, put off treatment in the last year because of cost. If we, as a bargaining unit, which would be the entire state of Massachusetts, a very powerful bargaining unit, could bargain down those costs, it would allow families to actually thrive in Massachusetts, which really, really... There's currently this ongoing practice throughout the United States of putting off medical care, which inevitably costs more in the future, both for families and for municipalities, states, and the country. So I wanted to come and speak in favor, because I cannot come to the city council meeting, but I wanted to make sure that my voice and Massachusetts Jocks with Justice was here to speak in favor.
Thank you.
If you'd like, send an email to Owen, he'll distribute it. We don't have to read it at the council meeting, but we could at least read it as counselors. Second, I just thought of something. I'm a senior. I'm paying Medicare bills, I'm paying Medicare Part P, and I'm paying supplemental. But how does the seniors have this bill?
Seniors, go ahead.
Fight over who's going to give me the good news, or is it the bad news?
Well, it's really good news, being a senior also, and whatever. So, all the other government programs funding Medicare, Medicaid, everything that had to do with healthcare will go into this pool.
I don't understand what you mean by that.
They will go into the healthcare trust.
I pay for it.
The healthcare trust that we're talking about, all the current funds that were a part of Medicaid, part of Medicare...
So, let me, let me see if I understand.
I need to say it better.
The employer, city of East Hampton, pays into Medicare for its employees. No longer does that.
They will not be doing it. They no longer do that, and you are not working, so you do not pay the 2%.
So the federal government is not going to say, "Wait a minute, that's a federal law, you have to pay."
No, no, no. And what's good for the seniors is, you're not working, so you are paying that 2%. You are basically having healthcare as a human right.
I understand that. I'm just wondering how they get around the fact the federal government requires the city of East Hampton.
Oh, current now, the waiver, that has to be worked out, yes.
There's a bill actually now, a federal bill about that, trying to say that one state's, to help encourage states...
That'll never pass, Republicans say.
Well, no, you know, there's some obstacles out there, but...
All right, well, that's what I wanted to know. I wanted to know if this was...
Now, what it actually says, and I'm trying to find the slide that says it, so I say it correctly. Of course, when I'm looking at something, I can't find the...
Well, I believe you. You don't have to, you don't have to find the page.
Basically, what it says, ah! Anyway, it is in here, and I want to make sure I get this right, but I think what it says is that people on Medicaid and Medicare will continue, you won't have to pay, you'll be part of this, and until they agree to get the waivers, that the state will fill in the difference in payments. So that...
So right now, I'm paying Medicare Part B for Medicare. I'm paying Medicare Part B. I get free Medicare, which I'll get from the state, but I also get Medicare Part B's a hundred and some dollars a week. I'm paying that.
You won't be paying any of that.
Well, until the waiver's done, I'm not going to get it.
Well, what it, that's what it addresses.
Okay, well, that's, that's fine. I was just curious how seniors were addressed, and obviously you thought of it. The biggest thing is the benefit of pharmaceuticals. If you guys can capture pharmaceuticals, wow!
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sold.
So...
I was pretty sold before I came in here, I'm even more sold.
We just wanted to make sure we did our due diligence.
Well, I did some homework.
So, there's two things here, really. One thing is the bill itself that we would be endorsing with the resolution, and the second thing is the resolution itself. I want to turn quickly to the resolution itself.
This is the resolution, right?
Yep. There's a couple of things. One thing, a little perspicacity, but right here, it says that 70% of East Hampton voters approved this on the ballot question, and that seemed so high that I actually went back and checked, and in fact, it's 76.
I thought it was 76, too.
So, I thought, yeah.
But I thought it's, I thought it's 76.
I had to, you know, I had to say...
Recommend we add it to resolution to 76%.
I guess I could have just called the clerk, but I'd like to actually find that number.
Yeah, I had to call Mark.
Can you find out what the number is statewide?
Yeah, oh, it wasn't a statewide referendum.
No.
So in individual districts, you can put non-binding public policy questions on. So in Second Hampshire, they did that, so...
Oh, Second Hampshire district.
There's a number, there's a number of...
There's a couple other districts that did it.
That's important to know, so this was just Hampshire?
Some are added in the first district, too.
Right. But I asked specifically for the vote counts for East Hampton from Barb, and I did the math, and it was 76%. So...
This was a Second Hampshire district referendum?
And I think the average was like 75% for all the districts.
For the districts that did it?
That did it.
And how many districts, you know how many districts did it?
Yeah.
I can find that information.
Is that possible? Secretary of State would know that.
Maybe a handful.
Well, yeah.
Not very many, huh?
It was, it was Western Mass. It was what, it was just in Western Mass.
Oh, okay.
So I think, I think the first Hampshire did it as well. I don't know beyond that. So the other thing, and this is, I just wanted, Counselor Zare, I wanted to get your thoughts on this, this lang... your thoughts on this, this language for where, under the "now, therefore, be it resolved." It says that "The City Council of East Hampton, Mass, is committed to providing equitable, affordable, and accessible health care to city and school district employees and retirees, and to all other residents of the city and the Commonwealth." And I guess my one thing with that language is that the way that it's structured makes it seem like we, as the city council, are committing to doing that, rather than that we're urging the state to do that, because like, we don't have the power. It's, again, a little nitpicking, but, you know, just, these are the things that might come up in the full council.
Something more like committed to supporting legislation that would provide.
Yeah, I love that.
That's what the next one does.
Right. But right, well, but that's, right, and the next one does that as, as, and here's how we would do it.
Specifically with this bill, but who knows what happens with this bill in the future.
I think you could end that, I think Tom's right, I think we could end that paragraph after retirees, because that we, the next one, Medicare for All of the state, does provide health care for all the residents of the state by supporting the bill. No?
Well, I think a couple comments. I think, I think, I'm happy with the all of the residents of the city, because otherwise, I think it looks like we're just saying that we're supporting this for the employees, but not everyone at large in the city.
But we have to say it differently, then, I can see.
So how do you like Owen's suggestion of saying that, rather than say, is committed to providing, we say supports legislation that would provide?
I'd be happy with that.
Okay, so that the city council of East Hampton, Mass, is committed to supporting legislation that would provide?
Sure, I was just saying, supports legislation that would provide.
After retirees, and supports legislation that would provide.
Well, no, we can put it right at the beginning, so it would say, "Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council of East Hampton, Mass, supports legislation that would provide," and then just goes from there.
I think that's...
Okay, got it. So will you write that up, and you should send it to Barb for tomorrow, too?
Yes.
And 76%?
Yeah, and 76%. I'm, I like the rest of it.
I do, too. It's not four pages long as Owen's resolution.
This is good, it's a...
Well, we all worked on it, right?
Yes, and I have to say, the hub was really helpful, as were Reps Saba Dosa and Rep Carey.
This is a pretty good sounding, I mean, an efficient and clear resolution, I think.
Yes, and succinct and less wordy is more impactful, if it says the right thing.
I agree with this more.
Okay, so...
So I'll make a motion to, or unless you wanna continue.
No, got you.
I'll make a motion that we accept the resolution as amended this evening.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if you could find out...
Other cities and towns that have voted.
How many cities and towns have passed this resolution across the state? I'd love that Austin's done it, if that's possible. I don't need to know how many districts passed the referendum, that's not it.
Just a different city and town.
It's important, if there's a lot of cities and towns that have passed this resolution, that'd be great, if that information could be provided to the full council. And you can do that through Owen, because you, and Owen could distribute it to all of us. And that doesn't have to be in the packet, Owen, I think it just has to get out there, like, I provide information that...
That, yeah.
Here's an interesting little fun fact, in the process of looking up the vote count, Charlie Baker won the vote in East Hampton the same day, by like 55 to 45, the same day that this won by 76%, which means that by math, about half the people who voted for Charlie Baker also voted for this on the same, like, within 10 minutes of each other. Kind of just a fun little, like...
I think, I think one of the things that will sell this is, we're currently paying a great deal for Mass Medica, whatever that's called, the current medical insurance that provides medical insurance for...
For Inogen.
Inogen, uninsured. If this actually, if this actually saves money to the state, because it's basically paid for by the tax.
Yeah. Never mind that, like...
But I wish they didn't call it a tax, I wish they called it a...
I know, I was gonna say somewhere...
I'm fine. I'm fine with that, like... I hate when people are like, this is like...
I like everybody, everybody wants this, you're all preaching to the converted, and it's easy to say, but you know, there's a lot of people out there that are afraid of taxes, and afraid of government intrusion.
Well, and all the publicity now with the national...
Well, and the national thing, I said, look, if, I don't care, I don't care who was in there, Owen, if you run a vote for you, as long as it's close to me.
For what it's worth, I... I personally think that trying this out on a statewide level makes a tremendous amount of sense, and demonstrating results, and that, I mean, that's the whole idea of how our government, the towns, and the state, federal government is supposed to work, with laboratories of democracy, we try things out, and the things that work, we try it a lot.
The selling point is, what do I save? You're not paying any more premiums, employee, you're paying 2.5% tax, how much is that? That's $200 a month. Now you're paying $400 a month in premiums. Do the math, that's what you saved.
And that's just the cost.
And you get, and you get everything, you don't pay any co-pay, you go see the doctor, you don't pay him $35, you know?
So guys, since we have voted on everything on our agenda, I...
I understand what you did.
I just have, I just have like two questions. In terms of a presentation next week, what, how, how will that work? Is that more than the public comment?
What I'm gonna ask that we do, I'll ask the President about this, is, I'll ask that we reopen, reopen public speak specifically for this when we get to rules, because otherwise, what's gonna happen is, we're going to have everyone speak at the beginning, and it's gonna be this mixed in with people's various, like, parking concerns and whatever, and then it'll go through the actual official public hearings, and it'll go out, and then we'll just be, it seems like it makes more sense to do it.
Contact.
Yeah, but since, what, I'll have to, I'll chat with the, with the President about this, but the one thing that I'm wondering is, like, there might be people who have questions for you, and that's generally not allowed during public speak time, so maybe the best way for, to do that is to have questions directed to Councillor Zarathos, and have, just have the material, I mean, I'll talk to, I'll send an email, and we can figure it out.
There are advocates, the President has leave way on this.
Sure.
And secondly, all I can say is, instead of giving us a five, 10-page PowerPoint thing like that, and a succinct, maybe a bullet point of all those aspects, seniors will be covered, et cetera, one sentence, all the things, employees are paying 2.5%.
So just the major...
Make it, you know, a one-page thing that we can read while you're stating it at the podium.
I circulate...
That, to me, that, to me, is all you need to do. You can, you can, again, present that kind of one-page document, bullet points on what is in this bill.
I'd also circulate this.
I certainly believe that the council is in favor of this, so...
Yeah, and circulate this to either one of us, or to the whole council.
Why don't I make Owen the...
Yeah, just if you send it to Owen, he everything, and I'll distribute it.
And just, anything that you want, give it, like, ahead of time so that they can read it, because otherwise, there's gonna be people asking questions that were actually answered in the presentation, so...
So you know, we did a public presentation last, two weeks ago, right? How, how different do you want that?
Well, now, it's gonna be voted on, so you can repeat what you said. But if you hand, if you're gonna do a bullet point thing, that, that's all you have to do, you know?
Right.
You've all got our PowerPoint presentation, Owen's distributed, here's, here's what it says in there, and here's a, and we're ready to answer questions.
So how many speakers do you want? You have a number of speakers?
Don't, I mean, well, I would say, like, if you're gonna have people come up and give a presentation, but people are entitled to speak. It's their right, their residents of East Hampton.
It's supposed to be limited to three minutes.
Yeah, that's the one thing. And I would say, in general, you know, we tend to happen at the end of the night, so if a bunch of people have the same thing to say, that's not really super necessary, but if people...
So I'm gonna ask you a really blunt question, because next week is a week before Christmas, and I think we may have trouble mustering up a lot of people to show up and speak. I mean, if we only have like eight or 10 people there...
That's plenty.
That's more than enough. The reality is, here's the thing, here's the one number that matters, 76%. That's the number, that's the percentage.
If the people, if the, if the, we're politicians, we're voted in, the voter says...
Dan Carey is gonna be there, he told me.
Dan Carey is, and because he's there, that's gonna help a lot, so I really don't think, if you have two or three people speak, plus Dan Carey, you're good.
Just get, make sure that the facts...
And tell Owen he can't talk a lot.
Owen doesn't talk a lot.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Councillor, has you used the word, was it succinct? I'm not familiar with that, I'm not familiar with that term.
Look it up in your...
I mean, I was gonna say, the simplest thing about this resolution is essentially a footnote on the referendum that we've already participated in the city, that's 76%.
But the biggest thing, but the biggest thing you're saying, is the same thing we all do resolutions for, is get more, more cities and towns on board, pushes the Senate and the House to listen, because all these cities and towns are sending them resolutions.
Exactly.
And that's why, what I like is, all the resolutions we do, in the future, I'm hoping they only do this, they only push legislation that we agree with. Yeah, we had a resolution that we don't like migrants and all that stuff, yeah, we don't like them.
We do like them.
We don't like, we don't like it.